From Mrs. LeBlanc. President.
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 Thank you, Mrs. LeBlanc. Let the record reflect that Mr. Gaywood joined us at five thirty-five. Okay, thank you. Um, now we have public participation there is then, at this time we go down to staff report, Dr. Porter.
Good. Thank you, President Barti. It's been quite an interesting week. A lot of things have gone on. On yesterday, we had our Brilliance Academy conclusion, and that went absolutely beautiful. We had students that participated for two weeks in the Brilliance Academy. Mrs. Reyes and the team did an absolutely wonderful job in getting everyone together and training our kids on robotics drone. And all of the students, there were seventy-seven students that were participating in the program, and all of those students received drone certificates. They're legally.
I'm just supposed to say they received the drone.
No, 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 they got drone. They're drone certified, so that is a good thing. And we do thank Chevron Phillips for sponsoring the event. They've done a great job. One of the most, I guess, there were so many wonderful times that we saw an experience with the students on yesterday, but I think the the main experience is to see the parents. Each student had their white robes because that was the beginning of their career, and the parents helped them with their robes, to put their coats on, their white coats. So they had a white coat robing, and that was just very, very touching. So we definitely appreciate. Dr. Kelsey, did Dr. Kelsey like to add anything to it?
No, you were right. It was really just a wonderful activity. To add all to the drone certification, all the kids, you know, like you mentioned, are seventy-seven of them. However, out of those that, we have two who are commercially, commercial to be drone pilots. So they could be out working other than business, you know, like any other adult.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, we're real proud of that, that we have two that are commercially certified.
Yes, yes. And a lot of, and all of those, we had, it was fifth graders in there as well, but the kids are, were so stoic, you know, so intelligent, so smart. They were just great to see, seventy-seven of them. And I mean, they were, they were in their element. The MC Mason was absolutely phenomenal, just really, really great. So we're really, really proud of our kids. Uh, Dr. Small hosts the first, his first of three meet and greet on yesterday, and that went really, really well. He had a wonderful presentation, so we're looking forward to the next two. Um, Mrs. Bernard, who's one of our elementary science supervisors, she will host the Science Institute on July eighteenth and nineteenth. And so far, there are ten districts that are participating in that, that would be represented. So we're really, really happy about the conference that will be held on the ninth grade campus. So that's a good thing. Summer school is going well. Uh, so far, we've completed week three and moving into the last four days on next week. So not that now, but who's counting, huh? Okay, so we're really happy. Our students, and the good thing about a lot of our students, you know, no Doctors Vine and Getwood and Morales, they pushed the forty-five, forty-five, and a lot from what I'm hearing, that a lot of students completed their forty-five, forty-five requirements. So that's a good thing, and they were able to be released a little earlier. So that's, that's wonderful. So the first progress reports were, I think, June eighth, and the second progress report, I think, was due today. So parents should be aware of that. So we're really, really happy. Curriculum writing is going well, and teachers are working very hard. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Minutes. Consider that if appropriate, approve the minutes of the June eighth, twenty twenty-three budget meeting. Can I get a motion?
So move.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Narcisse, and seconded by Vice President Lofton. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion passes. Consider agenda. The following items, which are of a routine and recurrent nature, have been designated, considered agenda items by the board president, per policy B E local. All of the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee, in which event the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after items not requested and separate discussion has been acted upon. Trustees, I'm gonna give you a minute to look through your consent agenda items. I'd like to call for a motion on consent agenda items one through sixteen.
Mr. President, it was kind of like the poor agenda item number sixteen.
Can I get a motion for, to approve consent agenda items number one through fifteen?
So move.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Narcisse. Can I get a second? Second by trustee Ambrose. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I have a motion, uh, can I get a motion to discuss, uh, consent agenda item number sixteen?
So move.
I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Narcisse, seconded by trustee Getwood. Discussion, Mr. Narcisse.
Dr. Porter, is it, what is the justification for the request of the assistant principal for the PAC?
The put off the, at this point, the put off the alternative school houses at some given time, over a hundred students. There is a lot of paperwork. There's a lot of discipline oversight for those students that are there. We have one principal that's there. Right now, what we're doing is when a student is assigned to PAC, there has to be a meeting with the school. So each student has to sit down there with the counselor, with, well, it's a group, it's a committee, and they talk about the, what's going to happen, the transition plan for that student. Once they get to PAC and they finish, then they go back to the school and they meet with the principal again. So that is happening with all of those students, all of the students that are there. As I said, in twenty twenty-three, are, there are students that are there that are a little bit challenging, and the principal does need help in order to get everything done disciplined, as well as the paperwork.
So is no one else there to assist her?
She is the, she's the only certified person. In order to discipline any student, you have to be certified in that area. A teacher can't, and the people that she has around her are not certified to do that. When you, if you're an assistant principal, if you're a principal, you can suspend. If you're not, you cannot. And I'm just giving you an example for that. There are certain duties that certified individuals in the district have where others do not. Anything else?
That, that's your question?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor for, uh, consent agenda item number sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that the ayes have it. Personnel, Dr. Porter.
I have given you a copy of the teachers for employment for your consideration.
Consider it appropriate to approve the employment of teachers. May I get a motion?
So move.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Getwood, seconded by trustee Narcisse. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Information, Dr. Porter.
Average daily enrollment by month, eight thousand one hundred fifty-three. Average daily enrollment by, average daily attendance limit, ninety-one point ninety-seven. Eight thousand one hundred fifty-three and ninety-one point ninety-seven percent.
Next time we go to discussion, Mr. Getwood and Mr. Narcisse.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, as you all know, on the May board meeting, when we had our election, we, of course, do the reorganization of the board. Um, I put on the agenda to review the reorganization of the board, um, only because I had a concerning matter. Uh, so this year, we chose to do things a little different, um, upon the request of the board. Um, but however, I don't believe that everything was quite clear. I know, um, that we had previous conversations, conversations on how we wanted to reorganize the board due to a concern that a former board member had, um, with the reorganization method. Um, at that time, that trustee had a concern about, um, the president's position because our president had changed periodically between two people, and they wanted a fair opportunity. Uh, it was in that board, that board meeting that we discussed in the back that we would come up with a method that was more fair and equitable for everyone to have an opportunity to serve in the capacity of president, um, or in the, in the capacity of an officer during their tenure on the board. And we ultimately talked about doing a rotation-based um, method. Uh, and our last board meeting is, that's exactly what we did. However, I didn't know if that went against our policy BDAA local because it states in that policy that we must, that the board shall select and elect a president, vice president, and a secretary. However, we did it in a rotation route, and also, um, it was in that meeting that how it was gone about and done about, it was not in line with Robert's Rules of Order. There was no motion or second on the table before we voted on that decision. And I didn't know if that went against our policy or if that was in line with the policy. Um, but going from the basis of it, it doesn't seem as though it was in line. So I wanted to review that, um, and see what action needs to be taken place, if there are any.
Madam Attorney, anything for that?
Answer the first question regarding to your policy does not dictate how you elect your office. At the, when we had a prior.
Sorry. So prior, this rotation of officers is not the first time in this school district. So we did have a prior practice of rotating officers. And the way that should have worked probably would have been, uh, that we, whoever was the vice president, that name would be presented because that person in a rotation would be entitled to the nomination, and you would vote on that. Um, and then the second person in line for rotation to vice president, that name would be presented, you would vote on that. If you recall from the meeting, um, I think, uh, uh, board member Narcisse asked the superintendent to define how that rotation system would be. And his comment would be, his comment was that Mr. Barti would move to the president's position and that, uh, Mr. Lofton, I believe, would move, yes, would move to the vice president position, and that's what you were voting on. You voted. Um, so at that point, uh, you took action. As a board, you took action. It was, I don't, I don't think anyone misunderstood what you were voting on. Um, at that point, it's really up to the board to call for a point of order. The only difference would be that you would have voted on them individually, and if one would have failed, then you would put up another name. But, um, by a majority, you voted on those two individuals. You did them at the same time. But the proper procedure would be, uh, a point of order by a board member. No one else can call for a point of order. I can't call for a point of order. So, uh, and once you, once you have done that and you've taken action and we're at another meeting, then Robert's Rules of Order is designed so that board action, unless there was some misunderstanding, it would have to be a misunderstanding by those who voted yea. Not nay, yea. That's the only person that could bring, those are the only persons that could bring that motion back to the board to reconsider. Uh, but Robert's Rules of Order, the guiding point is that once a decision is made by the board, that decision moves on. Uh, this is a new meeting. Uh, there's, you know, you, someone who voted in the yea could have made a motion to reconsider, but only at the time of the meeting. Okay? Once you've done a final action and you've got board members, officers in place, then there is no, there is no going back and trying to redo that. Okay? So the, the, the error would be a point of order, uh, if you felt that something was wrong. But I can tell, first off, let's talk about your policy. Did not violate your policy. Uh, but we could have done that better with the Robert rules.
Okay, I, I have a question for you.
Yes.
So according to the local policy BDAA, it reads that the board shall elect the president, vice president, and secretary. Also, our, our voting procedures is by the Robert Rules of Order. So we did, the board did not select or, or vote to suspend the procedure setting, so that would be against our board policy.
No, because your, only thing your board policy says is that you will elect. Does not say how you will do that. So when you, when you asked the superintendent to explain what you were voting on, he said you were voting for Mr. Barti to be president and Mr. Lofton be vice president. You elected a president and a vice president. That's the only thing your policy says. Um, I was asked to look at the policy when the rotation question came up in the first place because your, your policy used to be very specific, but now it's a general policy. So if you decide that you want to elect by rotation, that's the board's, that's a board's pleasure. You know, it's really up to you to, to guide yourselves, but in future meetings, if there's something that you feel is contrary to policy, contrary to, uh, Robert's Rules, then it's, it's up to you guys to call for point of order and get a decision on that, you know, at that time. Uh, but unless there is a confusion about, you know, what happened, which I don't think there is, um, then, you know, Robert's Rule says, we move on. That action is taken, and unless you ask for a motion to reconsider by someone who voted in the affirmative at that meeting, then there's not a, there's not a course to go back and reconsider or redo.
Okay, well, just a, just a point of information. I mean, I, I know for, I can only speak for myself. I know that when we did have that conversation, it was, I guess, my, my mind.
Can I, can I stop you real quick? Are we out of order because there was something that was discussed in executive session?
Yeah. Well, I, you know, it was not an, an action item. I think that was just a conversation between the board members of how they wanted to, to go with your election. So I don't, I don't think that that's something that's confidential, but let me, let me say that I was in that meeting, and there was not a detail, because I've talked to Mr. Narcisse about his understanding of how that rotation would be. There was no detailed conversation about how a rotation would only be from the president to the president. I mean, only be a rotation from members who are going out to get a nomination for president. That was never discussed. The only rotation that has happened in this, in this district has been if you hold an office, that you will get the first nomination to the next office, okay? And the office that's open, you know, totally open would be secretary. So I've never heard any, any discussion about, you know, certain people rotating to certain positions and starting at president. I, I, I don't have that.
Well, I, I think we, we both have two different recollection, recollections of what actually happened and transpired because that's what I recall happening. We were in the back, and it was brought up by a trustee who was on the with us, who had a concern about it because of the rotation base, which was, which we talked about originally, which brought up the fact of a rotation to give everyone the opportunity while on the board to serve. It was also in that time that we, as trustees, agreed that, okay, we could have a fair opportunity. I, I see what you're saying. I can, I can, I can agree to that. And so, as you said, there was no direct, um, way to do it. We never said that we would do it based upon those trustees that have not served in the office or based upon the trustees that were already serving. So I think that's where, that's where the miscommunication came into play because we had never defined what that rotation looked like.
But, but at the, at the meeting, there was a question to Dr. Porter. What rotation are we, what rotation can you explain what we're doing? And that explanation was given at that meeting, and the majority of this board voted for that.
Okay, well, just for clarification, was everyone on the same page at the board meeting? I know we, we didn't have any abstentions from that. I know we had one abstention from the secretary, but just, uh, just for clarification, was everyone on, was everyone on the same page and in line with that? Just asking the trustees.
Uh, let me make a statement. Um, I do agree with trustee Getwood that in that previous meeting, we did not specifically say how we were gonna do the rotation. I do agree with that part, but I also agree that when the question was asked, it was stated how we were gonna do it at that point. So, I mean, I see both sides of it. I, I do totally agree that we didn't make a set statement in that meeting of how we were gonna do it. However, when we did get to the meeting, the statement was made that this is how it was gonna be, and that's what was voted on. So both of those things are clear to me. Um, so, I mean, I, I kind of agree at that time. If there was an issue of how we were going to start it when that question was answered, you know, it would have had to been stated then if there wasn't any understanding. But like I said, I, I know that in that meeting, he's correct. We didn't say that we're gonna continue like this, or we're gonna pick new people, whatever. But I, I do understand what the attorney is saying too, that once it was asked and they were stated, it would have to be said then, you know, if we weren't gonna go with it or not, our vote yea or nay. So I, 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 I agree with both, both comments that are being said, you know, so forth for how it was done.
And, and let me further clarify. I do understand exactly what, what Madam Attorney is saying, and I, I do agree with you as well. The only reason why I am bringing it up is so that we can move forward as a board and, and make sure that we're clear in our efforts and also making sure that we are, you know, on the same page when it comes down to things because at the end of the day, we have to work together to get anything done anyway. So I was just bringing it to the board attentions to be sure that we all are on the same page when it comes down to this. Now, how I personally feel is, is definitely different than any other trustee on, on the board. I feel like we could have done things a little differently, but I do see that, um, that was the proper time to say it. And my apologies, I didn't know that at the time. I was on a whole different thought process, and I didn't think that that's exactly what it was, but it is what it is. I just wanted to bring it forward to the board to make sure that we all were on the same page.
And let me just say, I, I agree with you, uh, Taylor, and just going forth, uh, which I'm not saying that you are intimidated or anything like that, but even if it's just you alone, if you don't completely understand it, you know, make that statement because it may be for somebody else who thinks they understand and they're misunderstanding. So going forth, uh, I definitely think that you, along with all of us, should stop right there in the tracks, you know, as, as a board member, like you said, so that we can make sure we're on the same page because we don't want one person to think that we're not acknowledging that you don't understand. We don't want other people to think that, you know, everybody has a voice. So definitely, that's just to everybody. If you kind of have a, a reservation on it, because I know I will stop and say, you know, get it right there.
Tell you, I can help you, but I can't, I can't make your points of order, and I can't make your motions for you. Uh, but if you don't speak up in a meeting and the board takes action, the board take, they've taken action and, and according to Robert's Rules, we're, we're gonna move on.
All right. Thank you so much, Madam Attorney.
Okay.
Uh, next discussion, uh, Mr. Getwood and Mr. Narcisse.
Yes, thank you, um, again. Um, I also put this on the agenda, just to get more clarification as to where we are with the Performing Arts Academy, um, that was originally Abraham Lincoln Middle School. Where are we with that project? And, um, I'll let you say that I have just a few questions on it. But, um, where, where are we as of now, uh, when it comes down to the, um, Alpha Abraham Lincoln Performing Arts Academy?
Every school, this, every school within a district develops, um, processes in order to help their students come to school and be successful. Uh, when we decided that we would go to a performing arts school, we decided that because of various reasons. The first reason, we understand the data does say that students that are involved in fine arts do better academically. And there was another reason. We want students to be able to come. Well, the location of the school has been in question for some parents and students. So we're trying to find ways in which students will want to come to school and parents will want them to go to school at Abraham Lincoln. So right now, what we're doing, thank you, board, for approving the instruments in order to help our students. We're finding teachers that will, um, cover those, those vacancies for fine arts. Mr. Trent Johnson has someone just yesterday that's coming over to teach, um, I think, uh, dance in some form. So they're getting together. There's a lot of legwork that needs to be done, but we also know that this is the first year for that. There's nothing, um, that we need to, it can't be perfect the first year. It, it really has turned out better and quicker than we thought because of the renovation of the auditorium, which is a good thing. The classrooms have been renovated. The auditorium is being renovated. They will be able to use the classrooms at, at the beginning of the year. The auditorium will be, I think, released to us in September, October. So we are happy about that, but there is a process. We have a new principal there that has things and ideas that he would like, and we're moving forward.
Oh, definitely. Uh, and I, I definitely agree with you, and I, I do understand very, very, very clearly that, you know, we're gonna always have growing pains in that first year. Everything, you know, you can never just expect everything to be flat out perfect. I think my, the confusion for me came in to, to play was from the sounds of it, and, and this is no disrespect to anyone, but from the sounds of it, are we trying to enhance the extracurricular aspect of the, of the middle school? Or are we trying to create this into an actual full-blown performing arts academy? So that, that's, that's what I, I'm not understanding there.
Okay.
Like, what is, what is the goal, what is the goal for the Abraham Lincoln Fine Arts Academy? Is it to ultimately bring students back by enhancing the electives that we offer? Or is this to offer a quality, quality performing arts academy?
My answer to you is both. Obviously, you want to enhance the academics.
Most definitely.
Sixth graders are assigned to fine arts, uh, class. Seventh and eighth grade in the past have not been. So now we're looking at six through eight. We've always said that we wanted to enhance fine arts throughout the district. We started off, uh, with fifth grade, even when Dr. Brown was here, we started with elementary band. And at, obviously, it has not grown as we hope. You know, we see our band, our band is maybe seventy to eighty students, uh, the high school band. So we want to encourage and ensure that it grows. We want our theater arts to grow. We want our choir to grow. But in order to do that, you have to start in elementary and move up. Obviously, we started with Abraham Lincoln for various reasons, uh, and we definitely want our students to excel. We want that school to be a fine arts academy. What I've suggested is that we take our sixth and seventh graders this year and make sure that they're in a fine arts. Our eighth grader skipped last year because it was not. So we want to give them an opportunity if they choose to, but we're not gonna force them because of the schedule. You have to remember that with seven hundred kids that are there, the counselor has to go back and reschedule all of those kids in order to have that, have that fine arts, uh, credit. So there's a lot to go into it, and yes, it is a process. Obviously, it's not gonna be perfect the first year, but we're off to a great start, and I think the students are happy. We had a, um, opening and placed, the cafeteria was packed with parents and students, and they had a great time performing. It was beautiful. So, and that is what we want for every student in the district. We're just starting with Lincoln.
Okay, that, that was all. I just wanted to be sure that, you know, where we were going with this. Because when I, whenever I hear a performing arts academy, I think of something similar to a school like HSPBA in Houston. I think of a, something like a, a, a program that specifically catered to the performing arts when it comes down to that aspect. Something, something on a more grand scale, i- if, if I had.
Put off the independent school district is gonna be grand.
Oh, most definitely, most definitely. But I also want to make sure that in us being grand in regards to that, we are properly planning and we have the, the same vision and goal for this because being that I have prior experience with our district with new things such as the early college high school, you know, I know that sometimes when we have grand ideas and they may sound good, sometimes improper planning can, can kind of affect certain things in the movement, in the moving forward of those initiatives.
Okay, and what do you mean with the Wilson Early College, that we, that we affected something negatively?
Well, I, I wouldn't say negatively, but I'm, it, when it comes down to planning and vision and goals, I mean, prior to, and, and this is also a question as well. Um, so when we, our early college came about, before it was an early college, the Woodrow Wilson High School was actually supposed to be a performing arts school, correct?
Correct.
So what, when, when we made that switch in that transition, how long was it before it transformed, transitioned from a performing arts school to an early college?
That was an idea for forming arts. That never came to fruition.
Never came to fruition.
It never did.
Exactly.
In the two thousand sixteen, we planned for, uh, for, uh, Woodrow Wilson Early College, and that was a process. It wasn't done haphazardly. A lot of thought went into it.
Oh, yeah.
And it is because we wanted the best for our students.
Most definitely.
In two thousand sixteen, seventeen, we initiated the Wilson Early College from Memorial High School.
I was a student.
Then we had to renovate Woodrow Wilson Building, the building. We renovated that building. In two thousand seventeen, and Ms. Jeans reminded me of that today, that is when we completed the building. If you recall, we had Hurricane Harvey.
Yes, we did.
Definitely after Hurricane Harvey, we moved into that building, and that's when we started the Wilson Early College at the Wilson, Woodrow Wilson Early College. Since the inception of Woodrow Wilson Early College, we have had two hundred fifty-three graduates that have earned an associate degree for sixty credit hours.
Me being one of them.
Very, very well planned.
Yes, it was.
It was planned. It was, let me finish.
Okay, go ahead.
It was planned. It has been successful.
It has.
And for those students that have earned, including yourself.
Including myself.
And others, they've earned an associate, and some of them have earned a bachelor's degree at the age of twenty. So, yes, it was very, it was planned out.
Very planned, but what I'm saying is, being that I was a student in that program from my ninth grade.
And did you know how we planned it?
I did not, but what, but what, can, can I get there?
Oh, of course.
Thank you. So what I was giving reference to is, while we have grand ideas, I would like to make sure that we are not just offering the bare minimum to our students because when you think of a, when I think of a performing arts academy. Because when you think of a, when I think of a performing arts academy, when you hear it, you think of something on the magnitude of a, a, a. A full-blown performing arts academy. And and one of my questions was on here that I was getting ready to get to is, what is our framework for this program? What what curriculum will be taught at this program? Do we have the support that we need from our community? I mean, we, I know we came about this last board meeting or whatever, whatever meeting that came before us. But before then, I had never heard of that even being a talk. So did we even talk with the stakeholders on the west side to say, hey? We wanna, we're interested in bringing our students back to the side. Is this something you would like to see? Or was this a district initiative that came about to help influence our students coming back?
Both.
Both. So we did speak with, we did speak with the stakeholders on the west side?
Not just the west side. We.
Well, I mean, well, stakeholders in general.
Hope that once we get it off the ground and it becomes great and grand as the t- uh term you're using. We hope that other students will want to go there and would be able to apply to the Abraham Lincoln uh Fine Arts School. But that is something that we want to happen. Now, it is up to the parents and the students who want to be involved in fine arts to do that. But for those students that are there, we want to start off and we want to make sure that they're successful and successful throughout. Once they get, once they leave Wilson. Go to the ninth grade campus, all the way through twelfth grade and Woodrow Wilson Early College as well.
Most definitely. I just wanted to be sure that we have all of our our i's dotted and our t's crossed because this school year is coming up. Very, very fast and I know that August is around the corner. And I wanted to make sure that our students will actually have a performing arts academy to attend. And not just the middle school in name with enhanced elect- electives.
Well, once again, it's a process and it will not be one hundred percent for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. There's, there's gonna be some challenges. There's gonna be some changes, I'm sure. We have to make sure that we have the proper teachers, the proper instructors. We wanna have quality. You can, in fine arts, you can't just hire someone that think they can dance. Or think they can sing or think they can uh play an instrument. You have to have those individuals that really want to, that have been trained. So and that is what we're doing.
Okay, we're doing it now. And we're, and we're expecting to have all of these things by what date? Or about what, by by what school year? Not this school year, of course. We know not this school year.
Well, we, as we're gonna continue, maybe we will, maybe we won't, but we're gonna continue to strive. And to get it off the ground as quickly as we possibly can.
I just wanted to be sure, cause those sounds like, that that sounds like things that we would have considered before we even. Announced having all of these things. That sounds like something that I would have considered before I went to the public and said, we have a performing arts academy. I would have considered having. Those teachers already put in place. I would have considered having all this. So when we do announce it, those students can walk into that first day of school, having all these things put in place. Rather than having them go to school, transition to the next year and wait until we can get these things put in place. Because it is no guarantee that we will have these things put in place by next school year after this school year.
Once again, teachers are hard to find.
They are, across, across the globe. But what I'm saying, but excuse me, Doctor Porter, point of order, point of order. What I'm saying is, before we can move forward into this next school year. That just sounds like something to me that should have been thought out and planned before we opened up a performing arts academy. Making sure that we already had that curriculum put in place, these teachers put in place. The only thing, I can, I can see instruments, the board having to approve instruments. I can see that. But what I'm saying is the foundation of it. Is it done?
It's done. You heard Mrs. Cole when she came.
I heard Mrs. Cole one time at the last board meeting. She has not been back since.
We will save that for a later discussion. At this time, I'm calling for German at six, seven oh six. Can I get a motion?
So move.
I got a motion on floor by trustee Ambrose, seconded by Vice President Lofton. Thank you, you dismissed.